Good evening. I'll now call the City of Cannon Falls City Council meeting for Tuesday, July the 18th to order. Roll call.
Abbottey.
Present.
Altov.
Present.
Carpenter.
Here.
Dalton.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
McCusker.
Yeah.
Mayor Robinson.
Here.
All please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the only meeting we've had for the month of July because of the Fourth. Hope everybody had a good Fourth of July. This time, I will take a motion to approve the agenda submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ken, second by Morris. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that moves us on to item five this evening, public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Hello, my name's Martin Boff, Marty Boff. I live at 315 West State Street, Cannon Falls, Minnesota. I'm here with a concern about why the alley on the west side of the winery has been blocked off. I stopped at the police station on Tuesday. The officer told me that it was a safety issue and if I had issues with it, to come to the council meeting. So here I am. And I am wondering how, I don't know if that's a public alley, street or what it is, but it has to be owned by the city, I would think, right?
The city owns the property, EDA actually owns the property and that's actually the entrance to the parking lot for, for the winery.
Okay. Well, I'm wondering how they can block an alley off for three days and you can't get through it. I use that alley a lot, simply because I drive for public transportation here in town. I haul disabled people and I use that alley a lot rather than going out and getting on Highway 19. And I was told it was a safety issue. Well, for whose safety?
Well, for the safety for anybody driving through there while the forklift is moving back and forth while they were doing their bottling.
Has anyone ever went there and watched how many times that forklift crosses that alley? I did. Twenty-nine minutes, it crossed it back and forth three times. It's once every 10 minutes. Now, I worked in a warehouses up in St. Paul for five years, unloaded loads of steel anyways from three to seven a day in an alley similar to that, only it was longer. And no way would the city of St. Paul let us block that alley off. We were told, you're driving the forklift, you watch for the cars and you need to yield to them. And I believe it's the same way there. And also, I was able to watch the goings-on and I hope the city is getting some revenue out of that because they are using that alley as a warehouse. They block it off for the whole day, eight hours a day, park the forklift there and their, their boxes of material. And I don't see that forklift go across there that many times. So I can't see why the forklift operators cannot watch that. I think the citizens of Cannon Falls are being cheated. There's a lot of people use that alley. You might not think so, but there are. And I think they're, I've been a taxpayer here for 30 years, I've lived here 30 years. I also have three vehicles that I put license plates on and I pay tax to drive on that. And then I can't drive it because of, and blocking it off. I don't know, did everybody vote on it or was it just?
I made the decision to have, to allow them to do it as a safety concern because I would rather be safe than sorry later.
How about the safety of me with my bus?
Well, I mean, there are roads that go around that and it's an inch of way to a parking lot.
Yes, there are, but have you ever tried to go out? The reason I use that, have you ever tried to go out on Highway 19 and make a left-hand turn? You watch for traffic coming from the east and the west and about the time it gets clear, you start to pull out, couple cars come flying out of family fair. Now, that's a hazard and a safety issue to me also. When I can go out the other way and the reason I do that, I can go out, turn to the right and go up to fourth and, and head out that way and I don't have near as much traffic to watch for. But I guess if that's how you guys feel, I just think it's an injustice. And one other thing I would like to ask, it has to do with, we still have a leash law in town, don't we, for dogs?
Yes, we do.
Were they granted permission to just let their dog run wherever they wanted?
Nobody granted any permission for that. If somebody was doing it, it should have been brought up.
Because it does. And I've also seen a police officer sit right there in the alley and watch it. And the other morning, Tuesday morning, it wasn't just, they were outside doing something, they weren't bottling yet and here's the dog wandering around the city parking lot. And I know it comes from in there. So anyway, I'm just concerned and I just want to voice my opinion, I don't think it's right.
I'd like to make a couple of comments. First, first of all, thank you for coming and bringing this up. And then the one concern I got, Robbie, have you got any calls since this was done from people one way or the other?
I've only had one person that called me and.
Well, I've had probably close to 10 or 12 and they all felt the way he does about this. So I had a little concern too that we probably didn't discuss this more as a council or as a group. But appreciate you coming in and sharing your thoughts and he is not the only one out there that has the concerns that they're actually utilizing our property to make a financial gain. And safety is no doubt our interest, I understand. But also, a lot of people don't like that being blocked off. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marty.
Thanks, Marty, for letting us know. And Chief, can you look into that dog running loose stuff? And I thought, when we, when we first did that, we had first talked about they were going to be done by last week. I don't know why they're still going, they were going to be done by the end of last week.
I'm, yeah, I'm not aware that they're still going.
They're done now.
Okay.
It was last, last, last week, I think, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, last week.
Okay. I mean, they, they said they were going to be done something by like the 13th.
Yep. I believe they said they would be two or three days last week and then they were five days before the Fourth.
And, you know, if they ever need to do it again, we'll address it before we.
We certainly could, you know, send a letter to them. In this case, there would have been no time to get to Consulor McCusker's question. There would have been no time for, for council action by the time we received the information.
Right.
There wasn't a council meeting in the first part of this month.
Right.
So staff functioned under the directions that exist within the city code. But we could certainly send them a letter asking them to inform council prior to, by, you know, a month if reasonable.
Yeah. And then we can look at.
Formal action could be taken as opposed to staff action.
And we can look, we can also look to see if, if it needs to be closed off the whole time or if it can be done partially.
Yep.
You know, on those days.
And it's just that it's, I don't know what the precise definitions of alley versus parking lot entrance are, but because there's not a street adjoining it on the opposite end, is it, is it really properly an alley?
No, it's basically entrance to a parking lot.
It's an entrance to a parking lot.
That's used as an alley.
Right. That is used by people if they so choose, as if it were an alley.
Right.
Okay. I think that that's an important point.
In, in that block, for our purposes, we consider that actually a driveway.
Right.
Other than an alleyway. The alleyway exists further to the east.
Right.
Between their property and the businesses that affront Forest Street.
Right. And of course, many businesses and individuals use that property and that parking lot for their financial gain. We don't have a prohibition against using city property for the farmer's market, for example.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi. It's interesting how we all try to describe what this property is. And I have a totally different idea of what that is than you. And I think I can prove that to you. First of all, the EDA does not own that property. The EDA owns the property on this side, winery owns the property on that side. It's public property in between them and it is a roadway. It has been used for in excess of 100 years as a roadway. I went with a piece of property of mine to Mindot because this council thought they were going to shut me off from using a road that was used for like 100 years. It can't be done. It can be if you sell the property or give it away. But that property is owned by the public, it has been used as a roadway, it is a roadway. It is not an entrance to a parking lot, it is a roadway.
Thanks for your input.
It goes back to Lee Shipperley.
It depends on how it was designed. They can always, if.
Hello, my name's Adam Peters, Cannon Falls. I live on State Street, 700 West State Street. My concern is also with the parking and the winery. I think it needs to go back to the old way of parking where they are parallel on the side of the winery. When you have two full-sized trucks parked there, two vehicles cannot go by each other. And coming out of the winery, you can't see anybody coming out of that roadway, which Babe said. I agree, it is a roadway, not an alleyway. I have used it for 43 years. I am also concerned about the, why we're not taking advantage of the revenue the winery is bringing into this town. Okay, yes, it is tourism. Why can we not put a wine tax on them and get revenue to our town? They are bringing in people, but that parking lot is being used by people other than us that get to pay for it. Why can we not charge them for either parking or like I say, a tax to make a revenue off of it, to help our community? Because they're wrecking our stuff and that, you know what I mean? It's a parking lot, roadways going in and out of there. Just stuff like that. My other question I have is County 20 with this tubing parking area, that's a white line. How do they get away with parking there for five hours? I'm talking alongside the road here where the tubers park. I, I, that's another safety issue. Do we need to come up with more parking around here if there is this tourism in this town? And like I say, tourism is good for the community, but not all tourism is free. Thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
Thanks, Adam. I can answer part of that for you. The, the parking thing, we have discussed down along the canoe rental, that that is a major safety concern, especially your kids getting out of the cars down there. And of course, everything, I don't care if it's trails, we don't seem to have enough parking. If it's the winery, we don't have enough parking. And now we got the canoe rental, which is going over really well, which is a good thing for Cannon Falls. It brings these people in. But I will say that I do like your tax things because every time we talk about expanding parking, we talk about where's the money coming from? Who's paying for this? Then we build stuff and we give them tax breaks for 10 years so we don't have no money to do with this. It is a major concern and the parking down at the winery is also a major safety concern as far as fire and rescue. So Public Works has got a lot of homework to do here on this kind of stuff and hopefully between now and next year, we get some new directions on a lot of these things for you. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the council under public input?
Hey, John Peterson from Ferndale Market. You can tell me if we should address this now or during the agenda, but talk about the overpass, proposed overpass.
That's going to be in the agenda.
Okay, so wait.
Yep.
Okay. I'll be back.
Shoot.
All right. Anybody else? If not, this time, I would like to introduce our representative, Ms. Barb Haley.
Thank you. Sounds like you've got a full agenda tonight. It's good, good stuff going on. Thanks for having me. What I wanted to do is just give you a short update on the session and then answer any questions that you have. So I'll start, kind of start high level and then I can get specific about the, some of the things that are benefiting Cannon Falls specifically. First of all, I serve on three committees, on two education committees, the education finance or the education policy committee and I serve on the higher ed, which governs our U of M and all of our mid-state institutions. And also on healthcare and human services finance. So when you look at our state government, healthcare and education, that's about 80% of the budget. And as you know, the first part of the biennium is a budget year, so that's what we've spent our time doing, was crafting the state budget. A lot of hours on healthcare and education. So I'll give you that again on the high level. We passed a tax relief package, $650 million. That is going to senior citizens. We started to take a bite out of senior citizen taxes on social security, just a bite. It doesn't totally eliminate the tax, but it'll help a lot of our seniors. Also, something that will help this region is the property taxes for farmers. So the property tax burden, the extra burden that they would bear when you're doing a school referendum, we've taken a bite out of that, so their burden will go down by 40%. And hopefully that helps when you're looking at school bond referendums. Lots of components to that tax cut, but those were the highlights. Something else, kind of a first ever in the nation, providing tax incentives for students that want to come in and work in our state, they'll have the opportunity to deduct the interest on their student loans. And we think, again, this is the first of its kind in the country and we're hoping to attract workers and we know workforce shortage is a concern to all of us, so we hope that'll be an incentive. You also know about roads and bridges, $300 million, $16 million over the course of the next couple of years. Specifically, I think a benefit to Cannon Falls is the municipal street aid, $64,000. That Cannon Falls will see over the next four years. And I know I was in touch with mayor and council members on your advocacy for that money. So we hope that, that will provide, you know, help for you. Goodyear County and state highway funds, we'll see an additional $1.8 million over the next four years. County government aid, for Goodyear County, the increase is almost 15%. And local government aid, an increase of $15 million. Education, lot of money, of course, you know, goes into education and it's always a challenge of, increases are good, but I think people step back and say it always feels like it's never enough. For Cannon Falls, you will see almost a half a million dollar increase in education. We put what's called two and two on the formula, so 2% increase in each, you know, part of the biennium. A couple of things in education that were important policy reforms that were done. One thing is called LIFO, last in, first out. So when school districts are looking at unintended layoffs for budgetary reasons. What currently exists in state statute is that if a school district doesn't have their own policy, their fallback in state statute is that they can use seniority, which is kind of commonly referred to as LIFO, last in, first out. All we did is eliminate that in state statute. So the decision on how a school district handles unintentional layoffs is left up to them. So they can devise their own policy in conjunction with their teachers' union. So again, that was significant reform. We also did reform to teacher licensing and I won't get into a lot of detail on that, but I'll be, you know, meeting with the school board and make sure that they're, you know, fully informed on that. The teacher licensing system in the state has needed reform for over a decade. When you talk to most superintendents and school folks, they're excited about this because they hope it'll make it easier, again, to bring new teachers in. Going back to the teacher shortage and a workforce shortage, we need to. Going back to the teacher shortage and a workforce shortage, we need to attract teachers from out of state. And this reform should make the process a lot smoother. So some significant education reform. Other things for Cannon Falls that I worked on, zip rails of, you know, high concern to this area, and working with Representative Dreszkowski and Senator Goggins, we passed legislation for no state money to be used on that project, which was significant. Also worked with getting you authority for, or to exclude Cannon Falls from Met Council authority, which would help in your project for the industrial park and the data center that you're working on. So we were lucky that we got that legislation passed. And then additionally, this wasn't legislative, but to deal with the sewer pipe issue over the river, there's an application into the PCA. And what happens legislatively is we provide the money or the allocation for the PCA. And in anything with sewer and water projects, the city applies for the grant. So I will continue to kind of, you know, dog that through and make sure that we, that you can get that grant. It's slated now for 2018, at least that's where we are on the docket. And I've been told that it should rise to the top because it is such a significant, you know, water safety and sewer issue. So we'll have to continue to be in touch on that, but the grant is, is in process. Going forward, I guess the things that, you know, I've heard in talking to constituents and, and US city leaders and school leaders, the bike path, I want to be able to meet with those folks and look at their long-term plan and see if there's resources that we can bring to bear for that long-term funding, because that's a significant source of, as we said, tourism revenue for the city. The sewer project, as we mentioned, I've also talked with a lot of your local employers on the workforce concerns. And we're gonna be planning a meeting this fall and possibly bringing some folks from the legislature down to talk about, you know, how do we, how do we address that workforce shortage and that skill set shortage that we have and entice people to come to our smaller communities? So that's on my radar. And kind of what goes in line with that is housing. I know when I talk to school folks, they'll say, you know, geez, we, we have a new teacher position open. We work hard to recruit a new teacher, and then we have a problem getting, having, you know, available housing in the community. And I hear that around the district. There was additional money put into what are called challenge grants or housing grants for small communities in rural Minnesota. And I hope to do some more work next session as well on housing. So those are kind of the things that are on my radar. Healthcare costs, big concern, you know, housing, workforce, and as I said, then continuing to support education and seeing that those transportation dollars come your way. I'll stop, that was fast and furious, but quick update, I want to respect your time and agenda. Anything that I can answer specifically, Mayor?
I just want to say thank you for the job you did your first session. I know when you first got up there, I was up there this session, and it was like a whirlwind. And, you know, you seemed to hit the crown running and you communicated well with us. And we really appreciate that open line of communication to be able to, to get some things done. And thanks for all that you did for us for this session, and we'll continue to work with you going forward.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And come up and see the Capitol, the grand opening is in August, it's beautiful. I know I had some students from the school up. So anytime, whether it's, you know, business-related or other constituents, encourage people to give me a call. And as the mayor said, I think we've got a good line of communication established and that makes all the difference. So I'm here to serve you. Thank you.
Anybody else got anything? Thanks, Barb. Thanks, Barb. Right, that will move us on to item seven this evening, the consent agenda. Items of this area of the agenda may be adopted or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. For those at home, the consent agenda is item A, just incorrect claims for the accounting period ending July the 11th, 2017. Item B are the meeting minutes for the June 13th, 2017 city council meeting. Item C are the meeting minutes for the June 20th, 2017 city council meeting. Item D is disposal of forfeited vehicles. Item E is a police volunteer vehicle. Item F, authorization to dispose of police fleet vehicle. Item G, resolution 2288, accepting a donation for the fire department. Item H, resolution 2289, accepting donations in memory of Joan Ristie. Item I is hire unscheduled part-time employees for ambulance department. Item J, hiring temporary administrative staff. And item K, payment request for, number one, for the Alexander Court. Are there any items anybody wishes to remove from the consent agenda?
I and J.
Okay, item I will become item eight F, and J will become item eight G.
And D?
And D will become item H. Any other issues?
I make a motion, Robbie, go ahead with the rest agenda.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items D, I, and J.
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carries. That moves us on to council business this evening. The first thing is item A, which is authorization to prepare a TED application. Ms. Maroney?
Thank you. This is the next phase of the next phase of the next phase of the next phase of the next phase for the Highway 52 Improvement Project. And those of you who have been around recognize that the overpass that had always been planned to be constructed just north of the Cannon Ball was not constructed in conjunction with the completion of the, of the roundabouts and the access to Highway 52. That project originally, the total project of the city of Cannon Falls was about a forty million dollar effort, which was to have included the four roundabouts and the new interchange and the overpass bridge. And due to funding restrictions, MinDOT removed the funding for the overpass bridge several years ago and left it planned, engineered, proceeding with acquisition of property to accommodate the overpass bridge, but not funded. So during the last several years, we've looked at a variety of funding sources. I know the mayor and the council and others have been involved, working with the legislature, both state and federal, to seek funding to finish the project. And we've been told, time after time, that we need to pursue the available programs at MinDOT, and in this case, the Department of Employment and Economic Development offer for funding these type of projects. TED is the funding program that's been most recently and in the past recommended to us to proceed. TED being a combination of Department of Employment, Economic Development, MinDOT funding, and the Transportation for Economic Development, TED. So the next cycle is, is underway, and applications for TED grants are due September 15th. We did review this particular application with the Economic Development Authority again because the, one of the critical factors for funding of this competitive application is, to the extent or to the degree that a project like this, in this case, the overpass, would benefit, facilitate, generate new economic and community development resulting from the project. So we need to make a tie if, if, if we're gonna be competitive with a TED application. There needs to be a corresponding relationship to, if the overpass is built, that that will generate further economic development. So if the city council is gonna proceed with this, we have solicited a proposal from SRF Consultants, and for a fee, they're willing to assist the city of Cannon Falls with preparing this application for submittal on September 15th. In the event the council chooses to go, go ahead with this, the application itself would be brought back to the council probably September 5th for your review and, and authorization to actually submit the application, the final application at that time. If the application goes in, it would be reviewed and funding decisions made by the end of this year. And a project would have to begin construction by 2020, the year 2020, and the project would have to be completed by the year 2022. So it's, it's again, it's kind of a continuation of the Highway 52 Improvement Project. And we looked at this two years ago, or the city council looked at this two years ago. We chose not to proceed at that time. I don't think the timing was right then. I think a lot of things have happened since then that would make our request, if it's submitted, more favorable than it would have been two years ago. So the Economic Development Authority's review of this is recommending to the city council to go ahead and, and work, have us work on the application. And again, if the council authorizes us to proceed, probably September 5th, the application would come back. The details would be presented to the council, and then you would be asked to make a decision as to whether to submit the formal request at that time.
I know that, like Dave said, when I was in Washington and Ken was in Washington for our Transportation Alliance meetings, everywhere we went, Senator Klobuchar, Senator Franken, they all asked, have you put in for TED grants, what have you applied for? Every time we deal with MinDOT or when I've dealt with other legislators in the state, last year when they were on their whirlwind tour, they came through and they had a stop at the winery to, to talk about different projects, and it was, have you put in for a TED grant? And, you know, the timing, like Dave said, the timing wasn't right for us at the time. But we feel now that it probably is, and that's why we feel that we need to go forward because if anything is ever gonna happen, this has to be done. It's like another check-in-the-box that MinDOT and those folks look at when, whether or not something's gonna go to bonding or not. And if you, have you tried all your avenues before that? So I think this is another avenue that we have to go down to, to try and accomplish what we've been trying to do for 25 years.
I'd like to say something on that. You know, I've always been an advocate of not really using debris, making the bridge. But if MinDOT would just ever make a nice exits, you know? And Dave and I have talked now again and again, and he says, hit your head against the wall five thousand times and then do it again. Because they don't listen, you know, to us. So, I mean, that's something that would make sense. You get people off the road, you get, you know, what this town needs, but it's not there. If the timing wasn't right two years ago, why is it timing right now?
Well, I mean, if we're looking at trying to build, you know, get Southside businesses back up to speed, I, I think that it's a project that was designed for Cannon Falls and, you know, MinDOT pulled the rug out from under our feet. Because originally, the project was, was gonna be funded, and they, they pulled the rug out from under our feet and sent the stuff down to Pine Island.
But the overpass was always gonna be sort of the consolation prize. We, we're not gonna give you the exits that you want, so we'll give you this overpass and hope that that will be something that will satisfy you. But it doesn't give the Highway 52 access, which is the, the blood that those Southside businesses complain that they're not, they're no longer receiving the flow of. And this is not actually going to change that at all. So, I don't know, I'm...
Well, I mean, when, I mean, if you saw when the roundabouts were down, you know, when they were doing all the repairs, it, it's also a safety issue. I mean, and, and MinDOT saw that, is the fact that, you know, maybe you guys are right, you know, we need something to be able to get across there in case there is an accident or something up on the roundabout so that you can't get safety equipment over there.
That could be done in different ways though, Robbie. I mean, I, I think that should have been done. MinDOT should have done right-hand turnoffs, not for the public, but just for safety reasons out there. There's a lot of things they should have done and they're not doing. Should we discuss this now or should we hear from the public first or what?
I mean, we can have our discussion and we'll hear from the public also.
So my, my thing is for the council to know is that I, I, I was on the start of voting where that overpass was gonna go. I've been totally involved in it since the start. I met with all the businesses out there, what they wanted, didn't want, and all this stuff. And through it all, the one thing that I didn't like through the whole thing was that every time we tried to talk, it was always about demonizing MinDOT. So I actually had a meeting with MinDOT myself last January and told them that they, we deserve their respect when we have challenges in town. And I don't like the way things have been handled in the past. And I met two very good people that gave me their, their total concern and said to, don't be afraid to address us with this, and they don't know why this stuff's been happening in the past. So I, I came away from the meeting that there could be some better things done. But I do know that with all the businesses in the south, the one thing that at the very tail end, we knew we weren't gonna get the other bridge over. So the one thing we asked through staff and through Dave and whatever is that get us either the on and off ramps. If you ain't gonna do the bridge, get us the on and off ramps. And this was brought up to MinDOT, and they said there's some challenges with that. And we said, okay, if, if the challenges are there and the money isn't there, then at least get us the off ramps so we can get people to come off and do their business and go back to the, the roundabouts and leave again. And so through the whole end, in the last battle that I had with all this, is we were gonna try to shoot for that and MinDOT was gonna work with us on that. And then the next thing I know, it's all tore out and it's just a circle out there, goes no place. So to sit here and spend more money to deal with MinDOT just irritates me because we spent so much money on the project. I do know that they got number one out there, they got One Amingo Approach. They got all these other highways, they aren't getting anything done with them. When we were on our list, Robbie talked about the Pine Island thing. That ended up being just a big mistake down there. But Rochester also got four overpasses while we were waiting and supposed to get ours. So it's really hard to know with MinDOT without having a good one-on-one meeting. But I do know that my personal opinion and the calls that I got from people is they don't consider this bridge an asset at all. And they more or less look at it as a bridge to nowhere. So to be fiscally responsible, not only as a local councilperson, I don't think it's fiscally responsible for the state to spend this kind of money when you got all these other challenges. And our development, I know from the calls I get, is gonna be out on 86 out there. So things have changed a lot since this all started. And I know I went on too long, but I just want you to all be familiar with this. This isn't a little light bulb that just went off last week.
Well, Leroy, we, we did a safety study, we paid for a safety study. When you were on the council, that, and we had it done, and MinDOT looked at it all, we looked at it all. It came back and saying that, yeah, we can do it, but we gotta do it on our own dime. We can put the, and then if there's accidents, they could shut us down at any time. So then you flush that money down the toilet too.
Yep.
So, I mean, it's, it's something that was designed. It's just something we're trying to get them to finish the job that they started, which they haven't done yet.
Yeah, but I don't know why we have to spend money to do this. We contributed to the first project.
We took our money back for the second one.
And, and it was, I don't know why they don't do the studies and they don't come and say it's this much money and this is what it is, and we could say yes or no. I don't know why we're supposed to do this. And this grant money thing, whether it comes out of us locally or it comes out of the state, we're all paying for it one way or the other. So to me, it's fiscally and responsibly, it's just not a good thing right now. There's too many other things that are more important, such as, I'd rather spend seven thousand dollars and do some temporary parking down here to get the canoe rental off the highway.
So Dave, what we're, what we're considering tonight is just whether or not to hire this consulting group to pursue the matter a little bit further. What are we hoping to learn from the, from whatever it is they prepare? What are we gonna learn that we don't know now?
The revised cost for the construction of the bridge itself, how MinDOT's gonna handle the, the acquisition of properties that they've already acquired and will need to acquire, and how that's gonna be handled relative to the budget. Some of the final details in engineering on the location of the, of the bridge, the final schedule. I mean, we will have more information, again, revisions to, to the, the, the bridge plans that have already been designed by MinDOT, the environmental that's already been completed by MinDOT. I respond back in, in part to answer your question, Mike, to, to Cedar's question about the bridge being the consolation. The bridge was always in the project, and the transportation plan always included the bridge. But for MinDOT pulling money back, now we're left dealing with these very difficult questions. But the, the way to get the answers to those questions, at least one way, is to proceed with the application, the development... the development of the application itself for TED. So we would have those, you would have those, you would then be able to make a decision. Do we wanna go ahead with this and make the application at that time? So it's again, I hate to define it as the next step in a multi-step process, but that's the position that the Highway Department put us in when they changed the deal.
I always understood that it was part of the original deal. That doesn't make it a good part of that original deal, do you know what I mean?
I know exactly what you mean.
There was still not going to be the solution that those business leaders that I hear and that Leroy's talking about, and look at this, we were agreeing, that they, that they have clamored for. So just because it was part of that, just because it's on paper somewhere, doesn't mean we have to continue taking that step.
It does not.
Right.
It does not. And to John's question too, I should just, you know, in terms of the, the two years ago, what's different? And we talked a little bit about the safety study. I mean, on the heels of those roundabouts getting done, that was not the time to go back and suggest to everybody, let's be happy right now and do the next phase. It just, there was too much uncertainty on the west side of properties at that point when, on the heels of the, of the interchange getting done. And again, 40% of the points in this, in this competitive application relate to economic development. I'm not here tonight to tell you that if, if we go ahead and prepare this application, that I'm gonna have one, two, three, four, five, 10 property owners saying, hey, we really wanna go ahead and we're willing to make a commitment to going ahead. That remains to be seen. But that's part of the competitive nature of the application. It's 40% of the points. It's something if you decide to go ahead in the next month, month and a half, I will be doing that work in conjunction with SRF. They'll be doing the transportation, the coordination with MINDOT, the cost estimating. But working on behalf of the EDA, I'll be out talking to property owners and say, hey, this is coming, what do you think? And we need commitments. If we don't get commitments, we won't get funded, we won't be competitive, that's for sure. But we don't know that now. So that's the other thing we'll know, Mike, is it doesn't look like if we go ahead with this application that there's enough development interest primarily on the west side, not exclusively, but primarily on the west side to support a competitive application. I think it's better today than it was two years ago, clearly. We've had some progress on the west side, we have some conversation about more progress on the west side. Is there a direct implic, is there a, a, a direct connection between this, this bridge and those developments? It's not a perfect scenario, but I think we would compete pretty well this time. But we don't know who the competition will be. There's 18 plus million dollars of, of funding available. You don't know until you ask. And I think to Robbie's point, if we don't ask,
Right.
with Representative Haley now gone, we should have asked her this, but we're not getting received in the state capital for bonding bill, special appropriations, targeted funding for, to complete MINDOT's project.
For that overpass, right. It doesn't, it doesn't compromise our standing with respect to any other ask that we might ever have. It's just with respect to overpass, right? Okay, yeah, that's what I thought.
So land that XL owns out there, what are they gonna do with that, you know?
XL bought in conjunction with the CapEx project, the transmission line. They ended up buying 63 acres of land just west of Highway 63. I think that better transportation connections will benefit that property. I think it will benefit other properties. It's not gonna benefit everybody, there's not gonna be a direct relationship to all property owners in every business. But I think the 63 acres that, in this case, it's NSP and the, and the cooperative, the co-ops themselves that own it, they wanna develop it, they didn't buy that land just for those power poles. So they have an interest as a landowner, in this case NSP XL, they have an interest as landowners to develop that property. It's not in the city, but if we go ahead with this application, I'll be talking with them about that and we'll see what their plans are. So that's one of several pieces of property that would be pursued and at least investigated by me if we go ahead with this application. So we'll see.
You know, Dave, the one thing that I think about while I'm listening to you talk is that if we'd had done this originally, when the whole project was going on and got set up, you can't tell me that the project today isn't gonna run 30, 40% higher than when we started out talking about this. When we did construction last time, we were in a position, when I was on the council last time, that we were getting really good bids and things. And right now, everybody's so swamped, there's no good bids anyplace. So when it comes to MINDOT, I don't think that's fair, the way that works all the time. And I realize you can't do anything about it. So I, I don't understand, after talking to these people last January, and they said, if you ever have any questions, you call us. I don't know why you can't call MINDOT people and get up here and tell us what, when they think they're gonna do this or if it's gonna happen. And if they say it's out seven years, I don't know why we're spending $7,000 to look at this.
That's, that's a fair question. Here, here's, here's the response that, that I've received and I'm sure Robbie and others here have received responses as well. This overpass, for better or worse, will not be funded by MINDOT on any particular schedule. And that's unfortunate. They've told us, you've been here, we've all heard MINDOT in the last seven years kinda move around when this bridge is gonna be funded and when it's gonna be built. The most recent up-to-date comments that I've received from MINDOT is there is no funding planned, there's no funding requested in terms of special funding earmarked just for this bridge. There's no schedule, no request. So it's kinda one of those, gotcha. If, if you're gonna play, again, the message is you've gotta ask for the funding. If we compete and get it, problem solved, I guess. But if we submit an application and don't get it, then the question's gonna be, does the city of Cannon Falls go to the next step and look back with Representative Haley and others for a special earmark, a special appropriation, including maybe some federal dollars? It's, like I say, this, this, it's, it's unfortunate because from when I got here, this was a $40 million project, as I said. Roundabouts, overpass. The city of Cannon Falls committed to 5%. They were asked and committed for 5%, $2 million. We didn't spend all the $2 million. There's still money set aside to fulfill that obligation that the prior councils committed to years ago. Goodyear County committed 10%, $4 million, all their money's in, they put all their money in. Problem has been, the project that was presented to the city from day one, did not get built. It wasn't funded, it was changed partway into the process and here we sit. But our original commitment, our being the city of Cannon Falls and the council at the time, was $2 million for a $40 million estimated project cost, overpass, roundabouts, done. Didn't get done.
I'll give you just one more minute and I'll leave you alone. The other thing would be, to me, the asset to this would be, is if they would come along and it would all go the way we got it planned, the 7,000 would be nothing to throw at this. But then the asset to this would have to be that it has a good walk over and a good bike trail over it, that we could probably take it behind John Deere and tie it into the Goodyear County Trail someday. And it would make a good walking area for families staying at our motels. And they could walk over if the kids wanna go to McDonald's. But I know what MINDOT's gonna do. They're gonna come and say, no, that's, that's more money, we ain't gonna do that, you're just getting the two lanes. Otherwise, you gotta pay 1.7 million if you want that in there. I, I, I get so tired of this, I get burnt out, I'm sorry about that.
I'll help you some. MINDOT engineers told us in the last two weeks that there will be a sidewalk constructed in conjunction with the overpass. So from basically Fourth Street West over to 63rd to connect into the sidewalk at 63rd, that much would be done. It's not gonna get you where you're going on the east side, you know, south and back, you know, to the, to the roundabout. So the good news is, if there is some good news relative to walkways, MINDOT has told us that they will include a sidewalk over the bridge, again, from Fourth Street over to 63rd. So there will be connection at least on the west side for pedestrians to 63rd. So there's a segment of sidewalk.
You said there was $2 million set aside years back, what's left in that?
Yeah, I, I, we're gonna have to, if we go ahead, there's been no reason to do it before this. If we're gonna go ahead, when the application comes back to you and it's, in its proposed final form, we will calculate that number and we will advise the council, okay, if, if the cost of the bridge is this much and the grant is this much, this is how much the city paid before for the first phase, this is what's left of the $2 million. That minus what the city's share will be, is what you're gonna have to decide in September.
Can we use any of those funds to pay the $7,000 for the study?
I would say probably, because at the end of the day, I mean, the, the real dollars here aren't so much the $7,000. The real dollars are gonna be, what's the cost of the bridge? What's the TED grant? What did we contribute before? What did we leave from the $2 million to contribute now? And now what more than that are we gonna have to finance? And that $7,000 could certainly be financed as part of that.
My, my concern here is that we're so angry with MINDOT and rightfully so, that we're, I'm just, I don't know if we're losing sight of, of what, of this bridge in our, in our ire at MINDOT that we're, that we're glossing over if there are, are any assets to it, if there are any advantages. Personally, I'd like to see us spend the money and get the, and get the study done so we can at least see what we're dealing with. I mean, if, if it comes back and all of a sudden Leroy's right and it's 40% more than it would have been a number of years ago, that's a no-brainer, we can't, you know? But we've got it in front of us, we know what, we know what to do. I'm, I'm not necessarily in favor of the bridge or not in favor of it, but I'd sure like to see what we're looking at.
Well, the only reason I ask, because if this is an $8 million project and the city's 5%, well, it kinda figures out to $400,000, what's left?
5% was the $40 million deal. And again, funding is different now. The, the grant is 70%, that's the maximum grant. So we got 30% sitting out there that's at play here. And that's again, it's gonna be way more than $7,000 to finance the city's share of this bridge. But we don't know what that's gonna be yet. And but for the availability of TED, we wouldn't be having this conversation because we all would feel better if we didn't have to deal with it. But it's here, it's an opportunity. You know, I'm not here to speak on behalf of MINDOT. I, I think it's a reasonable investment to make to just see. And if it looks like it's something that doesn't make sense financially or it doesn't provide the benefit that the community thinks that it should or the council thinks it should for the, for the community, you know, we make the decision at that point. But if it's gonna be done, it's an opportunity, we need to talk about it, that's why we're here tonight. And you'll be asked to make that decision.
Let's get some public input, Robbie.
John knows.
Yeah.
John, you wanted to speak.
Me again. Yeah, thanks. I, I wanted to come just because I think sometimes there is the perception that all of the south end businesses are proponents of this plan. And I, and I would say in, in retail at Ferndale, we live and die by traffic count. I mean, we, we make it and some of you who are in retail know that, we make it every day based on our traffic count. And so I would be the first person to be, to be in line for anything that increased access or would increase traffic count. The way I see it, this doesn't draw one additional person off 52. You know, we, we need access and, and this doesn't move the needle on that at all. And I, I think that's what we need to keep in mind. I, I think there, there is this sense that this, this was owed to us, but that's water under the bridge. We are where we are. And you know, for those of us that have to get up every day and open the doors of our business, we're looking for immediate help. And you know, poor Dave has heard this broken record many times, but you know, some simple signage out in those roundabouts, we're still, years and years later, directing people through those roundabouts. And to my way of thinking, $7,000 could go a long way to provide some much-needed signage, maybe in partnership with MINDOT, and I know, I know they haven't always been a willing dance partner. But to me, there's some immediate impact with these dollars, rather than a roll of the dice to see what's around the corner and still end up without, without any additional traffic out on the south end of town. So I think if, if the effort is sincerely to help south end businesses, we need to be thinking about what, what's gonna see the immediate return on those dollars. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to speak as well, I'm Dick Peterson. Full disclosure, I'm John Peterson's father, if some of you are curious about that. I've been accused of being a fairly conservative person over the years, but I truly believe there are times where the public does need to pay for things that are good for all of us. This does not seem like one of them. I'm, couldn't agree more with Leroy. I mean, it's kinda the bridge to nowhere for $8 million or whatever it might be, so I can get to town one minute sooner. Seems like kind of a foolish waste of money. But I, I guess I wanna personalize this a little bit more, just so you guys kinda know the background. I've, I've been to meetings for 20 years too Leroy on this, you know, cause this has been going on forever. And I do think that people need to contribute to the common good sometimes. I've done it, we've done it, Jane and I have done it. MINDOT took three acres for the project already of ours. Five years later, we've not been paid for that. That's how great they are to work with. Theoretically, we're gonna go to a commissioner's hearing in Red Wing because they think it's worth nothing. Ironically, we also gave to XL to put up those power lines. They, they got an easement from us. They were really good to deal with, very reasonable in comparison to MINDOT. But ironically, they had to come back and deal with us the second time because the poll was supposed to go on MINDOT's property and MINDOT said, you can't do it. Put it on Peterson's property instead. Wasn't that nice of them, but I have no complaint with XL, they were very good. But this is the whole thing all over again, and I'm just tired of wanting to fight with MINDOT anymore. This would destroy the, the property, the house that we raised our kids in and John and his family now live in by taking out the whole front yard, putting up a big berm. And MINDOT would come and say, yeah, that's a quarter of an acre, we'll give you a couple thousand bucks for that. It's gonna totally destroy the property and it does no good for anyone except a handful of us who can get to town one minute sooner. I'm, you know, I don't love roundabouts, but that's what we got, it works. There's no real, real reason to spend more money to throw out a bridge because we're mad at MINDOT. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dick. Any further discussion, anybody else?
Just one thing, you know, I've heard it described as an opportunity and, and I, and I do understand that while you're in DC, they're talking about this, these grant, this grant money as a great opportunity. Pursue it, it's there, it's waiting for you. But this sounds like an opportunity to study for the sake of study, to build for the sake of building and to spend for the sake of spending with no other benefit. And I, yeah, for that reason, I'm not so in support of it.
Any other discussion?
Yeah. Adam Peters again. My, I mean, this is kind of a no-brainer and it's beating a dead horse, but as you say, why are, why would we even waste the money on a bridge when, you know, there's, there's other easier access ways to get off and on that? It's, that would be so much cheaper. And why, why do we have to argue with MINDOT over this? This is our town, why can't we do what we wanna do with it? Why can't we make it accessible to these people that are losing money? It's, our whole community is losing money because of this. And, and what is a bridge gonna do? Like you say, it's a bridge to nowhere. I mean, you could take an off ramp, go around, go around their house and go back on the roundabout. I just, I just don't get the, why we need to beat the horse and go for a bridge that's, how many more millions of dollars that we are wasting? And I really don't think a $7,000 study is gonna do anything to change anything.
Thanks, Adam.
Thanks, Adam. Any other discussion?
The one quick thing Robbie too is glad that Dick brought that up is that, you know, that bridge going across there gets so far out, it isn't like it's gonna drop in right in front of the motel road there too. You actually are gonna have to go to the back. And it isn't like it's gonna drop right in by the cannonball area either. The thing is gonna be way out. So these are just things that I don't have an agenda against the state. I'm just saying that it's so hard to deal with these people and reason with them that you, you just get burnt out with throwing more money at them and trying to do more things unless you could get them here and get it right from the horse mouth. Thank you.
Okay, but we are, we are applying for, and what we're talking about tonight is putting together a grant application to apply for a grant that we could or could not get to possibly build a bridge if it's approved. This is no more than putting that together and having this group help us put that together. SRF Consulting's the one that designed the overpass to begin with. They've got the specs, so they know what needs to go in it. That's one of the main reasons that, that we, we're working with them. We were working with the county also on this. So I mean, it's up to the council on how they want to proceed. I mean, so at this time, I mean, I'll, we'll bring it to vote, to chair take a motion to authorize SRF Consulting to assist with preparation and submission of the application for TED grant funds.
Second?
Yeah, motion by Mike. A second by Ken. Then we'll do a roll call vote.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
McCusker?
No.
Yes. Four, three. Three, three. I, I, I vote, I get the deciding vote. And I say yes. All right, that moves us on to item B, the compost discussion.
We discussed, uh, two months ago about putting some of that compost up for bid. The bid didn't quite come in, the one and only bid didn't come in where we thought it would be. So as the direction of the Public Works Commission, we would like to offer some of that up to the public and we'll figure out a format on how we would do that. We currently do stockpile that out there for the public to take, it's free. But we just ask that you don't come out with equipment, start loading up, you know, trucks. But we may find a day where we get in the fall when everything's cooled off a little bit where we can maybe load people up on any given Friday for a couple hours. We'll advertise it well and go that route. So that's what the discussion was for tonight.
What, what was the, the total offer? I think it was like, what, four hundred and eighty cubic feet or yards or what?
Four hundred and fifty cubic yards. At four thousand dollars, it's about eight hundred, eight dollars and eighty-nine cents per yard.
So that'd be about four grand?
Four grand, exactly.
So that, you know, the one thing I got thinking about it is your, your screening and stuff that you hire is like a couple thousand a year to screen that and stuff.
Sixty-five hundred.
Even if you aren't satisfied with the price, at least this pays for the screening for the free stuff that's going out, too. So I don't, I didn't quite know why we just didn't take the one offer. We don't have to offer anymore, but it's, it's four thousand and that's the only offer we have.
Right, we did have some objection from the public that felt that they helped make that, that they should be offered it back again. And that's interrupted discussion for you guys. So that's what the commission decided to propose.
Thank you.
Once we, once we realized we weren't going to cover the cost of our screening, and it's not at every year expense, we didn't do it last year, for example, we skipped a year of screening, didn't we? Right, so we, once we realized that bid was lower than we had hoped and considerably lower than what we feel fair market value would be, maybe it's because of the time of the year that we offered it for sale, not sure. Maybe we'd get more next year if we offered it in the spring. And to the extent we have compost left over, we may still consider doing that. But once we knew we couldn't cover our costs, we thought, and given the public objection, and it's fair to say, like, this compost came from the people in this town and it's of value, it's great in your garden. Let's be more proactive with offering it back to the public so they can enrich their soil. And to the extent we have, again, left next spring, maybe we try again and maybe we obtain a, a higher bid. So, that's it.
Lot of commercial people haul out there, though, it isn't just local stuff that goes there, so I mean...
Yeah.
But I appreciate your thoughts and, yeah, I, I, I mean, if we get four thousand, at least pay for the screening, I don't see a big deal. It isn't like we're losing money, we're losing money by giving it all away.
Wait a minute, Tom, you said it was sixty-five hundred dollars for the screener?
Sixty-five hundred dollars, this year for the screening?
So we got four thousand for the compost, we would still be losing money on the screener, correct?
Well, we're losing money anyway, we pay for the screen.
It's always budgeted, it's not losing.
Right, thank you.
What's, uh, you've got two piles, one that you had dedicated for free. How much, how many yards in that?
We typically put out, I would say, three or four loader buckets per week.
That wasn't his question, though. He meant the pile, the older pile of screened stuff, not the stuff that just got screened.
The older pile isn't, isn't matured yet. We keep rolling that and that will be a crop down the road in a year or two.
Okay.
We, we stir that and stir that until it's come out, then that gets screened. So at some point, we may have to even think about getting rid of that at a lesser cost. Instead of spending sixty-five hundred to get four thousand back, maybe we don't screen it and sell it for two dollars a yard as a cover crop for some, cover material for somebody. That's a thought, too, but right now, uh, this is the option we have was...
Well, the liability wouldn't be good if we don't screen. I mean, you're gonna have, not only, you could have glass, you could have different things in there. If you don't screen, I think then the liability really increases, Doug.
Yeah, well, I'm not saying give it to the public, I'm saying use it ourselves or, or somebody would buy it as such.
Right, or fill someplace or something.
Any other discussion? All right, thanks, Tom. All right, item C is discuss the charter commission logistics.
Thank you. Council previously approved to reestablish the charter commission. And now it's, we need to look at the logistics for, for setting that up. And I threw out some different ideas here, but in working with the League of Minnesota Cities, at no cost to us either, other than our annual dues, their staff person, I quoted what, what she says, but basically advertise for interested parties. And, you know, ultimately, the, the district judge is the one that appoints the people. And we have seven members that we'll, we'll be looking for. In that, it asks for council membership if you're, if you want to set a number of council reps. Our charter is silent on that. And, uh, and I'm suggesting perhaps to set up a ad hoc task force to review applications if we get a substantial number of them. And perhaps even interview if that's, again, if we get a substantial number. And then bring recommendations to council which would recommend to district court. It's kind of what's the next step you want to do. Advertising for it makes the most sense, but before I advertise for it, I want to kind of get a direction from you. If you want to set up anything, any mechanism to do any interviews or review of applications? Or if you want them to just come to me with the mayor looking at them or what do you want to do? And it's been many years since we've had a charter commission, so you don't need to decide that tonight.
We've got a lot of different questions rolled up in one. So let's start with one easy one. How many council members should we cap it at that should be on the commission? And I think it should be one or zero. That's my, I'm just putting that out there.
I think one.
One?
Okay, should that person, would that be a volunteer council member? Or should the rest of the council appoint, like voluntold someone to, to be, do you know what I mean? Or should it just be willing?
Is your, is your question, should there be a council, one council member on there or is there question?
No, we're excited we're having one.
Two, one.
One. I'm just wondering how, how that person gets on it? Do they get appointed by the mayor, do they volunteer themselves? I'm fleshing out how that one council member becomes a part of the charter commission.
I think they volunteer themselves.
Okay.
And if there's, if there's two people that want to do it, be honest, maybe the mayor will just...
Ultimately, the district court or district judge will decide. And if all of you wanted to apply, you could all submit your recommendation for yourself to the district judge. It doesn't necessarily have to come through council. But it seems logical that it probably, this is the mechanism.
Okay, and then how would we want to advertise? We want to, might as well advertise through the beacon of Facebook and our website. Yep.
Kind of a loose job description, I would imagine.
It'd be loose.
Fairly loose, yep.
And then, uh, uh, who, uh, is gonna make the selection for those to go to the district judge?
I think it should be a committee and that's...
Yep, I mean, I think it should be a committee.
Yeah.
It shouldn't just be me and Ron, no.
No, and I would love to have a citizen on that.
Yep.
Do you know what I mean? But all of a sudden, we're really asking for a lot of citizen participation and I don't want to wear out the ask, but...
Item D is call for proposals for Limestone Road reconstruction project. Mr. Anderson?
Mayor and council, recent home construction in the Woodridge Bluffs development brought up the concern of the last four or five hundred feet of limestone road and some trench settlement issues up there. Last month, staff met with myself and about that, Hinchess was the contractor on the project and SCH was the engineer. The project was accepted back in two thousand and five. The developer at the time, Land Geeks, also did some other projects in town, never paid us nor Hinchess. Consequently, Hinchess went to the sheriff's sale and purchased most of those lot, empty lots up there from the county and is, holds most of them that are being, the ones that are being built on now. We had a discussion on remedying the situation and also paying the situation. Hinchess was not interested in participating in any improvement, any, donated any funds or any equipment to do the repair. We did have a discussion on what we think the repairs might entail. So in your memo tonight, we put together what we think is probably the most cost-effective approach would be to go in, reclaim the, the existing blacktop and gravel in place like we do on our street projects. Pull out the curb, we have several areas that have settled, some that haven't, but when you start doing patchwork curb, you're probably gonna end up paying about the same as if you just took it out and it'll probably perform better. Recompact the settlement areas, if we need to bring in some more gravel, we can. Put new curb in, put the first lift of blacktop down a half inches and then let it sit for a year or two and do the final lift of pavement in conjunction with the future street project as an alternate. The thinking there is we'd benefit on some pricing in the future when we just do that little bit of paving at the end. That would also give us time to see if this repair actually holds up. We do have a few sidewalk panels that have settled, we'd repair those at the same time. And a couple catch basins down near the entrance of the development off of twenty-five. We, we have to do some adjustments or some repairs on those, we'd include that in the improvement. So tonight, we'd be asking council to authorize requesting quotes from contractors to perform that work. We bring them back at, at a future meeting for your consideration. A potential funding source, as Representative Haley mentioned, tonight is the Small Cities Assistant Account or state aid money for non-state aid cities, if you will. Two years ago, the city received about fifty thousand that you used to do a steel coating project on the west side. Same, same program is providing funding the next two years to the city that seems to be about the cost of what we think these improvements would be.
Okay, any discussion?
So at what, at what point did we end up with the streets? If the thing went into bankruptcy and they bought it back?
Well, the...
And only had two, three houses, a couple houses up there.
The council at that time in two thousand and five, September two thousand and five, accepted the development. It was done, unlike Sandstone Ridge or some other developments where the final lift doesn't get done or the street doesn't get done. The project was completed and accepted by the city in two thousand and five.
So it, it wasn't at the same time that they did across the street, too?
The projects happened generally about the same time. The construction methods were different, developers, contractors, the whole mix was different on that one. And that's why that is in a whole different situation than this one is.
But this land here, they have hauled the green clay out.
Not all of it, not all of it. They hauled out some in the middle and used on the interchange for non...
Right.
Structural fill and actually probably improved the middle of the horseshoe, if you will, by taking that hill out. There still is some of that green clay on, under all those building lots. And as part of their house plan, they have to take into account the thickness of it and accommodate their footing plan for that.
So how many lots have they got there and how many could be sold or how many would be connected? I mean, if, if you're talking, uh, there's thirty-five lots or that could be sold at twenty-two or got green clay, how does this enter into it?
Well, the, the, what we're talking about tonight is just fixing the street. All the lots in Woodridge Bluffs can be built on.
Right, but you don't have any houses way back there right now. You might have one.
One just started.
Unless they're right up by the front.
There's, well, there's, there's one existing house on this stretch of road and a second one just started. They dug for the footings here the last week or so.
Right, so, um, I don't know, it just seems like another one of those projects where we end up flipping the bill over and it shouldn't have been ours to start with.
Well, I'm disappointed that Hinch has never stepped up to the plate, but we got, we've taken homeowners out of the thing because we said we're gonna take care of the road and they're not gonna be responsible for it. So I would say get some bids and get it done.
Yeah.
Motion by John and a second by Ken. Any further discussion?
And just to clarify that, that'll be calling for proposals. We don't have to go through the formal bid process because it'll be under a hundred thousand, so. Clarify.
What was that, Ron?
We don't have to go through the formal bid process, which takes a long time. We can just send it out to certain contractors because it's under a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Faster way.
Okay, so we've got a, a motion by John, a second by Ken to request for quotes to have the work on Limestone Road up in Woodridge Bluff development bid. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose?
No.
Passes five, one. Moves us on to item eight E, Fire Department request to purchase truck. And Chief Anderson?
I'm Todd Anderson, the Cannon Falls Fire Chief. Before I get started here, I'd like to introduce Scott Lumby. He's with Custom Truck. They're the kind of the manufacturers that we've chosen to construct the truck and we've kind of been working with him since last July when we pretty put it on the budget plan. So it's been working, you know, for quite a while and, uh, and come to this point. Mayor and council, I'm here representing the Cannon Falls Fire Department to discuss the purchase of a new rescue truck. Now, what this rescue truck is, and I believe you put it in your council packets, what, what the truck carries and stuff and what the purpose of it is. I mean, it carries all of our rescue equipment, our medical equipment, our SCBA's, ropes, knots, everything we'd use as far as a rescue situation or a car accident or a fire situation. So that truck is really valuable to us as far as what we use it for. As you saw, and the rescue truck is twenty-one years old. Originally, we scheduled the, the truck to be replaced in eighteen to twenty years. But now we have pushed it out longer to compensate for other equipment purposes. Over the years, we have gained more equipment to carry on this truck. We have outgrown the space needed to put all of the equipment in securely. Their current truck is equipped with a command center in the box of the truck, which on the sixteen-foot box, there's a walk-in door in the back and it's got space in between all the way to the front of the cab, excuse me, for personnel and stuff to be carried in there, which is basically unusable space for the equipment to be stored in. In other remarks, the old truck is not coated with material to protect the frame rails from corrosion with the chemicals they use on the roads and the, to that, to treat the ice. The new truck is a stainless steel structure, which has a lifetime warranty on the frame and cross members of the truck. It is also very safety oriented. Airbags are equipped in it that deploy in a frontal collision, T-bone collision or rollover. Also with a custom chassis, the turning radius is a real plus to get into tight situations. Now, what we mean by a custom chassis is wheels are set back underneath the cab. It's like our ladder truck, if you've seen our ladder truck, where the wheels are positioned kind of in the center of the cab underneath it, which gives us a lot better turning radius to get into a tight situation. The question would be brought up, why not buy used? Often looking, I have, after, I have, I have all looked online and used equipment and found to be trucks ten to fifteen years old. They were kind of depleted out, not a lot of miles, which a lot of fire trucks don't get a lot of miles, but they, none of them that I found were set up like we need to store the equipment. A lot of them had pump capabilities on them, carrying water and everything else. We're, we're not looking for that because we got the three engines and stuff to carry the water in plus the tanker trucks. In a more of a city environment where they have tough time getting to water and stuff, I would imagine they carry more water on their trucks just in accident scenes and stuff. And it seemed like if I found a newer vehicle, it seems like it would have been, you know, buying someone else's problems. And talking with different departments and stuff, normally if they get rid of a truck before ten years, they're having issues with it. You know, so buying used is an option, but I don't think it's a very viable option. I'll also mention the, um, the situation that we may come into if we push the replacement to ten years, other than going to a twenty-year replacement program. We may end up getting trucks doubled up or we may have to buy a couple trucks in a year. We have another situation where our, one of our pumper's is thirty-one years old. It's on appreciation to be s... Uh, it's on depreciation to be s, replaced in thirty years. Um, but we were actually pushing that out to, to look at, see about this truck, so. The new truck promotes safety in all ways and I guess I'm gonna kinda stop there. I know there'll probably be a lot of questions. Um, I know we have a short time here, but, um, I'm gonna open it up and if I can't answer it, I'm sure Scott can. Questions?
Anybody got any questions?
Well, I see the need for the truck, um, after looking at the fleet of fire trucks, I, I think this is your main, is to replace this rescue truck, but.
Right.
Boy, looking down the line, you got some tanker trucks there are gonna have to be replaced in the near future.
There's actually one of them that's due to be replaced, uh, I think next year also, so we got basically two more to, to replace possibly. You know, those trucks, they, they don't get a lot of miles on them and stuff, but like, for instance, a tanker truck, it waits on them at all times as bad, we broke in spore. Uh, and had issues with that, I'm not saying that you're not gonna have issues with the newer one, but, eh, and then back to this rescue truck. I mean, I've been in a couple situations where we had to pull over to the side of the road, we couldn't make it to our emergency situation, you know, um.
Well, I've heard from other firemen that you've had problems buying a used truck, I see, you know, with a new truck, you wouldn't probably have that issue, but.
Right.
It's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money for a truck, but yet it's probably one of our main trucks used. We did purchase a pickup to, to compensate a little bit for, um, the medical calls and stuff where we don't need the big truck, where we've got a little bit of equipment in the pickup truck basically going medicals. But you get anything more advanced, this truck carries everything we need. Uh, like I say, fire situations, it's got our air packs in it, it's got spare tanks in it, uh, it's got rope rescue equipment if we got to go to a s- situation where we need ropes. It's got the, um, jaws of life on it. I mean, it's got everything in it and it's kind of our main, main used truck.
How many, about how many calls, about how many calls do you have a year that you use the truck?
Oh, it kinda varies, I mean, um, you know, this year, we're probably into sixty, seventy maybe, but this year it's down in calls, so. It's not as far as medicals, but as far as fire calls, so it varies from year to year what we use it for. You never know what situation we're having.
You've got a hundred and ninety thousand in your capital fund. I would suggest from now on that maybe the fire department sit down with the city administrator and kinda budget for this down the road. Because if we're talking five hundred thousand dollar fire trucks, I mean, it, it's a lot to handle.
It's all listed out in the capital expenditures, basically where the trucks need to be depreciated to, so. But yeah, it, it does need to be looked at again as to how we can fund this. I think the city has put in, I know, eighteen to twenty thousand dollars a year. And we have put in, we just put in four thousand a little bit, but, uh, as far as the char, charitable gambling and stuff, we never know from year to year how people are gonna gamble and stuff. So we don't know how to budget that basically, uh, as far as putting money into it.
I think you should think like fifty, seventy-five thousand a year or something if you're gonna keep on the top of the trucks.
Well, this is probably the second most expensive truck that we need, basically. Um, the ladder truck is the most expensive, but we bought that one used. Um, we did find a good deal on that one, but that's a million, two-dollar truck, you know, versus a four or five hundred thousand dollar truck we're looking at now. And if anybody wa, has any questions, you wanna sit down later and discuss them or anything else, I'm more than willing to go over everything with you.
It does seem like it gets, uh, used quite a bit, uh, for a small town, uh, sixty tons, that's, uh, fairly often.
And in the old rescue truck, uh, we kinda have things, we don't have the room, like I say, so there's, there's little bits for extrication here, little bits for extrication here. It's all over the truck and with this new truck, we can prioritize areas for certain things, so we, we exactly know where to get everything. It's got pull-out slides in it where we can, um, you know, assemble a, a variety of things on there for extrication, say. Um, it's just a lot of things built into this truck that, uh, will benefit us.
Well, I don't think we have to, tonight, I think we just need to consider the purchase and then numbers as we work on the budget here next month.
Yeah, and I can comment on the, the document that's in your packet. Uh, Lenell and I spoke with, uh, George Ilardson with Northland Securities. And a typical type of funding mechanism for a large piece of equipment like this or expensive piece of equipment would be equipment circuits. Uh, Mr. Ilardson provided us opt-five-year, eight-year. And of course, the longer the, the term, the more the interest rate is. And assuming an approximate eight thousand dollar cost of issuance. And Northland would work with us. And what, what, uh, George has done here is utilized, there's three hundred and fifty-eight thousand or four hundred and eight thousand. The eight thousand is the issuance cost. So basically, three hundred and fifty thousand or, or four hundred thousand, assuming utilizing either a hundred thousand of the existing cash on hand or a hundred and fifty thousand. Assuming some of it would be used, one or the other. And that's just for a scenario for you, so you can see where the average annual payment goes from anywhere with the longest term. Um, the, with three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, just about forty-six thousand dollars a year. Up to, if you go a five-year term, at, and we go four hundred and eight thousand, you're looking at eighty-seven thousand dollars a year payment. And if you minus, uh, look at the general fund levy, about a, each twenty-four thousand, give or take, will equal a one percent levy increase. So even at the, the longest time period of ten years, at three hundred and fifty thousand, we're still looking at about a two percent levy increase, all other things equal.